Incorrect. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. If everyone would just please take note of the emergency exits in case we need to use them. But stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Are you ready, Mrs. Giller? Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. Snyder?
Here.
Kendron?
Here.
Perdis?
Here.
Mr. Jeros?
Here.
Mrs. Carey?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Grumsey. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent O'Shea for her report.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. What a beautiful day for our budget hearing. But before we go to the budget hearing, I just want to provide you some updates, starting with a staff update. As you can tell from our agendas, we've been making steady progress on filling our retirements and as well as filling four positions that we had open all through this school year. So two math teachers and a science teacher at the high school and a science teacher at the middle school. Nurse and safety officer positions, we've been having a hard time filling. It was high school nurse and we're a little low on safety officers. But we advertised in the Times Union with the digital package and we have a number of applicants now. We tried to make it easier so they could just apply right through HR postings. And so now we're in the screening process for that. So that's good news. So we talked a lot about recruitment and I know I've talked to you in the past about student teachers. And I have an update to share over the weekend in that. But I wanted to talk a little bit about retention too, because recruitment, that's one area. But it's really important, once we hire teachers, you know, to make sure they feel welcome, invited. And there's a long time between now and September. So I wanted to tell you some of the things that our principals and our teachers have been doing. So for example, our new French teacher at the middle school, Amy Foster, high school French teacher, has already reached out to her, has met with her, spent a couple of hours with her, will continue to meet with her as a mentor over the summer, but has made that connection. Our principals have been giving tours of the building to new staff, making sure they know the, you know, the rooms feel comfortable. Laura, I know, at the end of the year, has a staff luncheon. So all new staff who are starting next year will be invited to that end-of-the-year luncheon. So all of our administrators, we've been reading, we've been studying together about ways to make teachers feel welcome. And I just want to also let you know that what we've been reading and studying doesn't stop at a brand-new teacher to us. You know, we do have new professional academy and meetings for our first-year teachers and mentors. But it takes, it takes a while to really learn and hone your craft. So going into next school year, we're really looking at, okay, first-year teachers, this is what we do. What do we do for second-year teachers? And then also to get feedback from teachers and look at things to help us retain teachers, you know, down the, down the road as well. So teachers, you'll be hearing more about that as well. But I just wanted to let, let you know, because sometimes that's the, that's the missing piece. Phew, we found a teacher, we hired them, but then what's next? So we're really trying to make it a much more robust experience. So you might have seen we posted for summer positions today. There'll be a few more postings. We have some logistics to work out with the high school. And then you'll see that. And I'm not sure if our extended school year was posted or not, but that's our special, special education program. So since I'm in a role, Stacy settles, so perfect. I, I just wanted to also talk to you about this, this weekend. So I had the pleasure of being at Proctor Saturday evening. Mrs. Carey was there. Do you want me to stop?
No.
Okay. So as Legally Blonde was announced as a winner of the best set design, and we also got to see two of our students perform, Cece Tarlo and Roz Anali. And a huge thanks to Darling Groft, who not only designed the, the set for Legally Blonde, but she had also designed the, the background for the promenade. And I was there Saturday and, you know, our students looked wonderful and the background, it was just, it was just amazing. So I'm sure you were going to see it much better than I. But so next time I'll, next time I'll talk.
Coordinate better.
Also, today was the Spring Career Fair. Approximately 30 groups were there. And I walked around, that was, that was very interesting and informative. And thank you to Becky McForrest for organizing that and we had kids rotate through. Okay, you ready?
Ready.
Now it's time for our budget board.
Can I just actually, I'm just gonna say, can we turn it so the people that are here can see it? Because we know what's gonna be on the presentation. Can we just like, instead of you guys having to move up to the front row again? Like last meeting? Thank you. Because we can all still see it.
So welcome to the annual budget hearing. And all the information is also available on the district website. There's a budget and taxes page and you can find all the supporting documentation, the line item budget and the annual notices on that page as well. And the newsletters are actually being mailed out to residents. They're all ready to go. They're going to the post office tomorrow. So expect them within the next couple of days to show up at, at your homes. So 2425 proposed budget is $53.4 million. It's a $1.1 million increase over the current year budget, just over a 2% increase. And the majority of the new revenue is coming from state aid. So if you take a look at the state aid and the building aid, the net positive change is just over $900,000. So that's the majority of the new income. And we do have a 1% increase on the property tax levy. It is well below the calculated tax cap. So it'll require a 50-plus-1% voter approval for the budget to pass. Now, the story for us is that the state continues to support the students. In Coho's foundation aid was in the news this whole budget season. We are fully funded just recently. And the push is going to be to look at foundation aid and to change that model moving forward. So we don't know what to expect moving forward, but for this year, it's good news and, and we're very thankful for it. So the tax levy, it's $179,000 in new revenue for us. Our timetable for the budget and the assessors' timetable, they don't really match up. The assessment role is finalized in July and we're asked to provide estimates now in April. And we're in the month of May now. So these are our best estimates. But for the 1% increase on a home that's valued at $150,000, the estimate is $30, just under $30 for the year or less than $3 a month as far as an impact. That does not account for the, the basic star exemptions and the basic star is going down. So it's going down from $510 to $481. It's not within our control, but that is a factor when we're talking about impact to the taxpayer. Proposed expenses, so the two top-line items, instruction and employee benefits, are the bulk of the expenses. It's 82% of our budget. So you'll see in the three-part budget, really the only growth is in programs or the majority of the growth is in programs. So obviously, we are people business. And so that's where most of our expenditures are top-heavy there. Operations, you'll see a 6% increase there. We have some additional security we're adding at the elementary schools. We have, our utility expenses are going up. We have some building repairs and we're also proposing a maintenance mechanic. And then there's some health and safety equipment needs that we have. Transportation, that increase is based off of the estimated CPI. So the contracts increased by May CPI each year. It's trending over 4%. And then our runs have increased for out-of-district placements as well as our homeless students. Debt service is artificially low, so we have debt that is coming off. It's retiring. We know that we're gonna have new borrowings that are planned for. So you'll see a decrease there, but that's a temporary situation for one year. Interfund is $100,000. Last year, there's no proposed capital outlay for this year, but the larger construction project, we put that initiative on hold for now and then we'll look to revisit that once we get through the capital projects. So the three-part budget, 82.2%, as I discussed just, just previously, is for programs. So that's our instructional salaries and benefits for our teachers as well as our people services. So that's guidance, health, et cetera. It's also our textbooks, our extracurricular activities, athletics, as well as our transportation costs. Last year, that was 79% of the pie. Capital costs, again, this is artificially low. Last year, it was 12%. This year, it's 9.4%. The main change there is debt service. So capital costs include debt service. It's also our maintenance and our custodial salaries and benefits as well as our utilities and any tax or insurance claims that we have. Administrative, there is a cap that we have to implement each year when we, when we do this three-part budget. So it's limited growth. It was 8.1% last year. It's 8.4% this year. So administrative costs include the salaries and benefits for administrators as well as our clerical staff. It also includes our tax collection, legal costs, auditing costs, and professional development and planning for our staff. It also includes the centralized, excuse me, data processing costs and the BOSI's administrative costs.
Thank you. So as mentioned previously, previously, our American Rescue Plan funds are set to expire. And so we carefully plan those funds to have limited impact as they expire. Two positions were put into the budget last year from the, the three positions at the elementary school previously funded through our proposed budget. There are also speech physical therapists, educational therapists in the budget to help support functional skills classroom, which will be at Harmony Hill. And then campus safety monitors. We currently have them at the middle school and high school. You know, safety is key. So in the budget, one for Lansing, one for Harmony Hill. And they've been on-call, both our safety officers and our campus safety, for instance, whenever needed, and then ELL support to continue at Harmony Hill. So at our, at our middle school, there's also dean of students and social worker, previously funded through IRP in the budget. Point four, fund teacher to bring it to full-time. Point two, PE teacher to help us provide another section with unified sports and having more students in both of those sections and then always summer guidance support. And at the high school, IRP students, we funded the dean of students. Tutoring center instructor, we talked about how successful that has been this year. So to continue through next year. And then a special education teacher, point three, bringing the position to 1.0. Health teacher, allowing the health teacher to remain at the high school because of the increasing numbers of students at the high school. And some of that is support as well. And then we talked about athletics, how important the weight room has been. And you saw how many students use the weight room. So funding that through the local budget, the supervision, as well as some supplies and software. Facilities and 1.0 maintenance mechanic, which we've discussed. And then equipment and building repairs. And then continuing our cycle of equipment with our IT department so that we are not having a huge, you know, number of phone books gap go out of use at the same time as we have in the past. So getting much more cyclical with that. So one of the things we had talked about is we had a number of requests. Not all could be accommodated in the local budget, but we are exploring potential efficiencies and grants. And those are listed here in terms of the various buildings. So for example, what does it mean an efficiency? Looking at scheduling certain things, a different way to free up some sections or looking at our programs differently. And are there programs that are, you know, not meeting our needs currently that might have in the past? And looking at how to, we all staff with grants. We had Title I grants. We're under a resource allocation review. So really looking at those, those grants. And I'm not gonna go through all of these. I know we've done that before, but those are the areas. And some of them might be both efficiencies and potential grants.
So what happens if the budget is defeated? There's a limit on what we can raise as far as taxation. So the tax levy would have to remain flat, no growth. And then in a contingent budget, only certain things are permissible. So it's what is required by law, certain statutes, as well as what it's required to maintain our educational program and the health and safety of our staff and our students. So a contingency budget would be a reduction of $265,000. And really, the fun, the fun pieces are what pay the price in a contingent budget. So we'd have to reduce district-wide arts and education programming, our field trips, materials and supplies, some of the repairs and any equipment that's not health and safety-related and conferences. Also, under a contingent budget, you're not permitted to, you have limitations on facilities use and carrying any overtime costs. So there's also that piece. So next steps for the, for the budget process tonight, we're having, obviously, the public hearing. Again, the budget newsletters are prepared. They'll be mailed tomorrow. So the residents will be receiving them in their homes this week. And then the public vote is 21st, bless you. We have two board members that are running. There's two open seats. They're running uncontested, but there, there is an opportunity for write-ins as always.
What's that?
The names.
Oh, it's Mr. Jackson and Ms. Snyder. And we have polling locations at three elementary schools. And they are open from noon to 9:00 PM on the 21st.
Thank you. Before we go on, any questions? Anything in need of clarification?
I think we have exhausted.
Say it one more time. We're in a very good place. Thank you for developing such a physically responsible, sound budget relative to other districts. I'm proud of the work that this board has done and the preparation that we've did the last three years so that we were not in a place where it was sad for everyone. So thank you again.
Thank you. Thank all of you. So some upcoming events, fifth-grade parent night at Soho's Middle School. A couple of committee meetings coming up, Core Education Committee and then Wellness Committee. The Wellness Committee is board-level committee. Spring concert, Global Youth Service Day, an event that is really positive as, as always and has our students out there doing service activities. Also, I did share the, at the high school, Stephen Hill from the Addictions Care Center will be speaking to students and both here and at Avro Park. Thanks, thank you to the Avro Park Foundation. Stephen's coming to us as well. And then Stacy mentioned the annual budget open election. There is one thing I did also want to let you know. We are applying again for the School Resource Officer grant. Because we applied last year and did not receive it, it's actually the city that applies, but did not receive it, then there is more emphasis placed on that we have moved up in priority. That's for the Southland to receive the grant, but because of that, I thought it was worth trying again. So we're currently, you know, sharing data and a strong collaboration, especially with the Candlewood Care Program that we started this year, something that we can also emphasize as well. And that's going very, very well.
So Peggy with grants, just because I'm not in the process and stuff like that. But like when you participate in like state bids and stuff like that, you can request a debrief to find out like, wow, what were the qualifications of the other person? You know, for them to get the grants and stuff like that. Are you able to do anything like that?
We did. I, for the SRO grant, sometimes it's very helpful and helps you target.
Right, yeah.
In that grant, it wasn't that helpful. I think I kind of shared it at one point in time, but it wasn't very specific. So, but yeah, we always, we, we ask each time if we can get a grant.
Let me talk about, you know, what is covered under that grant. Is, is that now just strictly having, you know, School Resource Officer on the table? Would it help support our Candlewood Care Program or is it?
It's for the, the SRO, being able to travel through the city or additional, you know, tire dedicated to that work, you know, current highway and some of that. So it can't cover just a piece.
That's a federal grant, correct?
It's a federal grant.
So it's widely applied for. Thank you. Does any Board of Education member have discussion on agenda items tonight?
Any discussion on agenda items?
I just want to mention regarding Police Service Day, please feel free to, you're out and about next Friday morning sometime between 9:00 and 11:00. It'll be the high school and municipal goods of the all-through community. And you're all welcome to come back to either or both buildings for a cookout after. So, you know, it's a lot of fun. Kids have a great time. So, you know, hoping for beautiful weather. Not like this morning.
Elaine, will you share the schedule and the sites with Mary and we'll make sure?
Sure.
It's tough and bad.
We were all fearing a sign of sheet circulation.
If you can bring your ink pen. Yeah, back door. Want to grill? It's just, it's even relaxing with kids hanging out, seeing what they did. It's so much fun.
It's a really cool day. Thank you for organizing that.
I know.
And Angela and myself and Kathy Mattel really helped a lot too from the city side of things. So it's a, it's a team effort for sure. I mean, it's like, there's so many people.
And I just wanted to make a comment on the, I was, can I make a comment on the agenda before you vote?
Want to get in line to make that comment?
Usually wait until it's.
I mean, it's an agenda item and if you have a comment on it.
Go ahead. Messed up. Go ahead.
She's my, no pictures. I just want to say that although I know that it's for their personal choices and it's, it's done, I think regret because of the time that they've given to this district, this building. I just could not be more devastated to see the visitation of Joe Sullivan and Gene Delgowski. I have worked with Jude the full 45 years that I've been here. Jude helped before this. There's no doctor. And everything, it's questioning to be pretty sad for us and the. Work lives because they came here. Probably the top really educated that ever met in my lifetime. It's just, it's a huge loss. Skip me this, like.
Thank you for that. Okay, any other comments?
Can I, a piece of a motion that the Board of Education adopts the following resolutions of the May 8, 2024 Agenda, item 6A through D and 7A through M?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Giller?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson? Snyder?
Yes.
Kendron?
Yes.
Ms. Perdis?
Yes.
Mr. Jeros?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
I would like to make a comment on the.
Yeah, I, I wanted to echo your sentiments and mention to you, Jude has instilled a love of art in so many, many students for so many years. So she will be greatly missed. She did say she would be continuing her work with the Alumni Association. So that's good news. So we'll, we'll see.
With the departure of Mr. Sullivan and Ms. Kandelski, it is a huge hit to very dedicated and loved, well-loved staff members. But thank them both for their many, many years of service and all of the lives that they've touched because they're the people for a whole bunch of kids. Any comments from the Board of Ed members on anything that's not on the agenda tonight?
I would just like to say, construction is never easy, but huge shout-out to everyone who made the spring season happen, both on the sports side, but also just being at the high school during this time and the work that's going into it. For the places that welcomed our kids as the home away from home for games, extra transportation, all of it. Thank you. I think it's, it's going as smoothly as we think. And we're making that happen as we always do in Coho's, but want to give a shout-out to everyone who was involved in all the planning and resources that go into that.
I agree. And a huge shout-out to all the parents and to Jeff for making sure that the seniors had a great senior night at Union College. And they did a great job in making sure everything was Cohosified.
That word.
Do not echo.
I know, right? Can't take the Coho's out of the girl.
Not to bring it down to a place, but I just have also gotten another few inquiries on saving. I hate to bring it up. I know that it's a topic that nobody wants to talk about, but it is getting increasingly worse, especially, you know, the Harmony Hill ride up, you know, Malin Mickey Way. I don't know, you know, what is district-owned versus what is city-owned, if we have a timeline. But I have received a few inquiries since the last meeting if there is a plan, what that plan looks like and if it will be before the end of the school year.
Yes, we have three quotes, although one of them is a no quote. We can't fit it into the schedule, but we have the three quotes that we needed. We needed to go back a little bit because there was, they're not all things equal. There's different levels in the asphalt. And so one of the quotes is a level six, the other is a level. And so one of the quotes is a level six, the other is a level seven. So I asked about it at our OAT meeting and why the recommendations were different and what the advice was of the team. And so actually, it's on my desk. We need to schedule it. And it will be scheduled this month. Rain has not been a friend as of, as of late, but yeah, it'll be scheduled. It'll be scheduled this month for sure. I don't have a date.
Just even an idea of a timeline. I know that we were going in a different direction.
Correct.
So I just hadn't, I didn't know what.
Correct, yeah. The first phase was handled in-house, in-house staff, and then we went through more asphalt than, than we had expected. And then we had a little bit of a, a gap in our resources and manpower, and so we had to reconvene. And then the quotes, there was a little bit of give and take a couple of times to, to get it right. And then just seeking the professional advice to understand what the differences were to make sure that we're making the right selection, because there is a couple thousand-dollar difference between the two types. So we have the recommendation now, and we can go forward with scheduling it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or statements from the audience about non-agenda items? Okay, we have no policy or review tonight. Future meetings, the annual budget vote and elections, as a reminder, both are open from noon to 9:00 at the three elementary buildings. We will be here the next day at 6:00 PM for a board meeting. And then the meeting after that is June 12th, also here in the library at 6:00 PM. There is not a legal effective session tonight, so I'm happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Mrs. Gillar.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Ms. Gendron.
Yes.
Paritas.
Yes.
Mr. Jeros.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.